Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the November 13th, 2024 meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. The first item of business is roll call, which is done electronically, and I will declare a quorum present with Ms. Learing joining us by phone. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is followed by a moment of silent reflection. Please rise. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation recognizing November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday. I'd like to invite Amy Krupp down here and whoever else wants to come join to accept the proclamation. I don't want to stand in front of the shortest person here. You can stay up here while, would you like to stay up here while we read the proclamation? Okay, if you don't need, if you don't want to stay, you don't have to, okay? All right, whereas the City of Fond du Lac City Council celebrates our small locally-owned businesses, their owners and managers, and the contributions they make to our local community and economy. And whereas 76% of the 290 businesses in the downtown Fond du Lac partnership are small locally-owned businesses, which represent the commercial and economic hub of our community and a substantial share of retail market activity. And whereas 81% of our small locally-owned businesses are managed solely by their owners, which demonstrates the independence and self-reliance of small business owners and their unique role and contribution to the local economy. And whereas small locally-owned businesses contribute to the local economy by recycling an average of 67 cents of every dollar spent back into the community and help build strong communities by contributing to local area causes. And whereas Fond du Lac's small locally-owned business community contributes to a vital economy and vibrant central business district by providing unique shopping experiences to residents and visitors and contributing to the overall character of the district. And whereas Fond du Lac's small business owners have realized success through their vision, hard work, and commitment to operating a business daily, and their efforts are critical to building a better Fond du Lac today and in the future. And therefore, it is fitting that we join in this initiative and show support for small business owners, recognizing their valuable role and contributions to our economy and our lives. Now, therefore, I, Tiffany Brought, President of the Fond du Lac City Council, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Fond du Lac, and encourage all citizens of Fond du Lac to support local during the holiday shopping season and throughout the entire year.
Thank you, President Brought. So, yes, we represent 290 businesses in the downtown district, and these are the small businesses that make up our community, that make our community unique. And we are greatly appreciative of all that they are doing, their commitment to our Fond du Lac community. And the holiday season is now upon us, and I encourage everyone to think shop local this holiday season when, when working on your gift-giving purchases. Do we want to introduce everybody?
Yeah.
Monica Lara, Argentimit Orem Jewelry and Gifts.
Dave Beagle retired from Woods Floral.
Alyssa Holgren, Eleanor Holgren, and Bart Holgren from Fond du Lac Cyclory.
Becky Huber, Blue Marble Botanicals, Aromatherapy and Gifts.
Tracy Mathwig with Lilian's.
Julie and Brian Ballson, Gallery and Frame Shop.
Sarah Palace with the Cellar District.
Ashley Diler with National Exchange Bank and Trust.
You know Amy.
Thank you for all joining us.
Well, and thank you so much again to all of you for joining us to celebrate Small Business Saturday. The next item on our agenda is public hearings, and we have none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda finalizes the proposed actions for the meeting, A, October 23rd, 2024 minutes, and B, list of claims dated November 6, 2024. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey and second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Ms. Laring?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is audience comments, agenda and non-agenda items. The presiding officer will limit speaking time for non-agenda items to one minute and items, items noticed on the agenda to five minutes. Ms. Hefter, do we have anyone wishing to speak? We have two. First, we will have Stephen McCord, who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 5B, adopting the final 2025 budget.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak again here tonight. Last year, I came up here, and I made the statement that the city had lost its ability to attract and retain its employees. Thinking back on that statement, I think I should have been a little bit more specific in what I meant. In nowhere, in no other department, I feel it's more of a problem than the water in the wastewater department. And the lack of staff and the constant revolving door is just a recipe for disaster, and it's not safe for anybody, not for the employees or any of the ratepayers. We need to do better to help keep our employees here. Just this year alone, in wastewater, we lost four employees. That's too many. And years before that, countless more good operators and good lab technicians. Tonight, I just would like to give you a brief overview of the, you know, JDQ process and the new wage study that's coming along, and how it affected, you know, us at the wastewater and me personally. Back in 2022, we sat down with our superintendent, Cody Sheppi, and we discussed how the plant is starting to age and that we need more help out there. We're starting to fall behind. That's not including any of the tens of millions of dollars we're about to spend on new equipment out there. So keep that in mind as we go through this. 2022, in around November, we had that discussion. In spring, Cody instructed us to fill out the JDQ forms and re, to do a reclassification of our job position. We handed that in by April. We had no response from City Hall or downtown, all the way through summer, August, September, and finally, in October, we got an answer of nope, that's not happening for the year 24 now. And finally, in '25, we'll get one extra employee for the maintenance department. What we struggle to understand is why that ball stops downtown, and our superintendents, who are struggling to keep our positions filled, don't have more say in filling the positions at their departments. Water, you need people to fix the water main breaks and work at the treatment plant. Wastewater, similar story. You need a operation staff there that knows the plant. It's not just a treatment plant, it's all the pump stations in town, too. You have seven operators, currently four maintenance mechanics and one electrician. Since I moved maintenance in 2020, we were without an electrician for 12 months. We kept one for about a year and a half, and then we went another 18 months without filling that position. That really put us behind the ball on everything. That's a position we have to try and do ourselves. Some of the stuff we do out there is not just regular maintenance and oil changes. It's complex equipment. And being state of Wisconsin and nationally recognized as Facilities of the Year and Facilities of the Future, somehow, we get overlooked and put into the same classification as a mechanic in a garage next door changing oil. If we don't know how all the electronic pieces work in the PLC programs, how to read wiring schematics, and how the application is actually working behind that screen, there's no security in anything we do there. We can't depend on electronics and AI and computing to do our job. You need somebody there that knows what the purpose of all that intelligence is. If you don't know the root cause of it, you can't fix and protect any of the equipment or any of our citizens. We need to do better to keep people there for years, not months. One other thing, quick. This spring, I came in here and we talked about team building, and we limited it to four hours a year. That has not been brought up again. Four hours is way too short for a hard-working department. Something to add, volunteer. But if we want to volunteer in the community, if it's a 501(c) you know, facility, why can't we have a paid day off to go and volunteer somewhere? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Thomas, who would like to speak on vicious dogs.
Hi, thank you. You know, our stories, I'm not going to rehash that at all. I do want to thank, I know many of you have been working on our behalf. I'm sure there's a lot going on behind the scenes we're not aware of, so thank you. But myself, my wife, our neighbors, we still will continue to be a presence as long as that dog, as long as that threat is in our vicinity. We've taken some self-control, I know some of you are aware, maybe not. We made some signs in the neighborhood to show that our neighbor had that vicious dog. It coincided with Halloween, well, not really coincident, but it was, part of the reason was to protect kids from going to that house, and we did that, and we're proud of that. Just coincidentally, I also sent you all some emails with some recent attacks, one in Old Creek, very similar to my attack, a lady walking, two dogs, two pit bulls attacked. One of her dogs was killed, and the City of Old Creek euthanized one of the dogs immediately, yet one still remains. And then there's another more graphic video that I'm running out of time to talk about, but hopefully you saw it.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. With that, that ends our audience comments, so next we'll move on to our action items. Action item A, Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt license, limited liability, Ledgeview Bowling LLC, agent name Tyler Litke, business name Ledgeview Bowling, business address 170 North Prairie Road. Our introduction is by our city clerk, Ms. Hefter.
Thank you, President Brought. Tyler Litke, agent for Ledgeview Bowling LLC, has applied for a Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt license at 170 North Prairie Road. There are no proposed changes to the business plan. Background checks were done on the, on city staff, and alcohol license committee recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hefter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Zimmerman? And second by Mr. Mullen. Are there any other questions or discussion? Oh, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you, President Brought. I just would like to wish Gary Hilbert well, everything he's done for this community, not only in bowling, but just in Fond du Lac in general. I wish him and his wife and the family very well, and I wish the best of luck to Tyler in his future endeavors at Ledgeview. So, fully supportive of this.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Ms. Laring?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item B is Resolution Number 9148, a resolution adopting the final 2025 city budget, levying a tax, and establishing fees. Our introduction is by our Director of Administration, Ms. Davy.
Thank you, President Brought. So, tonight is very, actually a very exciting night for us finance folks, because without an adopted budget, none of us can do what we do for the city every day. So I'll make some blanket comments that will cover the next four resolutions, so that you guys can just roll through those resolutions without me having to do an intro for each of them. First, I'd like to repeat the highlights that I pointed out at our September meeting, because they're things that we've all worked hard to achieve, and I think they bear repeating. Our net new construction is the best that it's been in four years. Our equalized property values continue to increase. Our equalized tax rate has decreased. Our employee wages are increasing, and our health insurance premiums are remaining flat. We have no increase in our water or sewer rates. And perhaps the two most important things, we have a balanced budget, and we will continue to provide our high level of municipal services that people have come to expect. So, just something brief on each of the four resolutions. The first and third resolutions will actually adopt the budget. Since we receive funding from the federal government for transit, we have a separate resolution for them, because the Federal Transit Administration requires some little bit different language in any budget adoption resolution. The second resolution approves our five-year capital improvement planning document. No projects are actually authorized with this document. That's done each year with the budget adoption. This document is our planning tool. And the fourth resolution is our reimbursement resolution, which will allow us to start work on our 2025 capital projects that are funded by debt before we actually borrow those funds. So this allows us to place orders now for equipment that have long lead times, and to get our projects out for bid before the contractors finalize their schedules for next year. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the resolutions, and the next four resolutions are now all yours.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Davy? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey, and second by Mr. Mullen. Are there any other questions or discussion? I would just like to offer my thank you to Mr. Moore and to all of our department heads, especially Ms. Davy, because I know how much, well, actually, I don't know how much work you put into this, but I can imagine how much work goes into putting together our city budget each year. So thank you so much for presenting a budget and answering all of our questions. I do want to thank Mr. McCord for showing up and providing an employee perspective. I think it's always difficult for an employee of an organization to come and speak to someone like the city council. I do hope, as we look forward to the wage study in 2025, that that might address some of the concerns. And I also just wanted to quick mention, because we had a lot of public comment that regarded homelessness, and Mr. Heisler and Mr. Moore and I had a discussion this morning to talk about looking forward, and so we're planning a couple of meetings in 2025 to provide some education, and then hopefully look at what we could do for, moving forward. I think it's difficult to just say, let's just do something. I think we do need more information, so I'm thankful to my fellow council members for being willing to, to look at something that our community wants us to address. So, while I, I know that there's people who are upset that there's probably not more in our budget to specifically address homelessness, I think we are going to make some steps going forward, and I'm, I'm glad to see that. So, with that, are there any other comments from council? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Ms. Laring?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item C is Resolution Number 9149, a resolution approving the proposed 2025 through 2029 capital improvement plan. Are there any questions from council for Ms. Davy on this resolution? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Schussler, and second by Mr. Heisler. Are there, are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Ms. Laring?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item D is Resolution Number 9150, a resolution adopting the 2025 Fond du Lac area transit budgets. Are there any questions from council on this resolution? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Mullen, and second by Mr. Zimmerman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Ms. Laring?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item E is Resolution Number 9151, a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. Are there any questions from council on this resolution? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Heisler, and second by Mr. Godfrey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Ms. Laring?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item F is Ordnance Number 3802, an ordinance amending Chapter 630 Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Fond du Lac to add parking restrictions on West Arnt Street. Our introduction is our city engineer, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Brought. This request was initiated by Sadoff Iron and Metal. It has been noticed that large trucks are parking on West Arnt Street and blocking the existing stop sign at West Arnt Street and Satterley Street. So there is a visibility issue with the existing stop sign. The proposed resolution would be to add a no parking zone adjacent to the, where the stop sign is currently located on the north side. sign is currently located on the north side of West Arnt Street, from basically the east bank of the Fond du Lac River to the east 270 feet. This will allow the stop sign to be seen and increase safety of the motorists and pedestrians in the area. Advisory parking in traffic, along with engineering support, the addition of these parking restrictions on West Arnt Street. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Zimmerman, and second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Ms. Laring?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That ends our action items, so next we'll move on to our presentation of input items. We have the residential development of city property at Scott and North Main Streets, presented by Councilmember Schussler.
Thank you, Madam President. I thank the previous, a previous city council and city staff in 2018 for taking decisive action to purchase and take down the Saputo Cheese Plant. Excellent work. This site is now the crown jewel of redevelopment sites in the city. In being city-owned, I'm advocating that a process begin or be speeded up, which will result in development of the site consistent with the City of Fond du Lac, North Main Street corridor plan. Could we have the slides of that plan up? The work on this corridor plan began in August 2022 with analysis, followed by interviews, and then a survey in early 2023, and a draft was prepared in March of 2023, followed by a public information meeting in April of 2023, and after that, the plan was presented to the Plant Commission and the city council. I thank Diane Benson and the city staff for all the amazing amount of work that has gone into this North Main Street corridor plan. Now, here we are in November of 2024, and we need to move forward. This discussion of this agenda item fits with the city's strategic goals, which you see in the budget memo on page three, if you look at your budget, and I credit Mr. Moore for this, where it says Strategic Priorities, number two, expanding prosperity through community and economic development with these areas of emphasis. A, expanding the variety and quantity of residential development, so people have the options they want at a price they can afford. With this overall strategy for the city in mind, this agenda item tonight turns attention to the northeast portion of the North Main Street corridor that you see on the screen, which is the city property on Scott and Main Streets. And you can see on, this is slide seven, that we see right now, the pinkish, and Ms. Benson, correct me if I'm saying anything wrong here, the pinkish-orange, where the plan, up in the northeast there, where Scott and Main is, indicates, among other things, and I quote, "mixed-use developments and standalone commercial or residential developments." The agenda item that I asked for says residential development of city property on Scott and Main Streets, and that's how I asked the agenda item to be worded, which shows my bias favoring residential, but due to its location adjoining the park and near the lake, many people see this site as a place with amazing potential for residential development, which the city so badly needs. And I know that developers have been in contact with Ms. Benson about this area. And what I have in mind when we say residential development for this ideal site, we don't have anything else like this in the city, is market housing, not tax credit housing. It's not for discussion tonight, but at some point, I'd inquire whether this site might be eligible for a project that could take place that would qualify for tax incremental financing, which today, in our state, is the main tool for catalyst for development. When I last looked at the City of Fond du Lac, we had 3% of our assessed value in TIFs, or tax incremental financing, and the state allows 12%. This agenda item also fits with what we heard from the housing study that we just had presented to us recently about so-called opportunity sites. This Scott and Main Street site with a small amount of site design work, and there already has been site design work, you're seeing this from the corridor study, could become one of those opportunity sites which the city would market to developers. Publishing and marketing our city's opportunity sites to developers was on the list of things to do to promote new housing as recommended by the housing study. Basically, what you're saying is that we're open for business at this particular site. And then you let the 80 or 85, or I don't know how many developers we have in the state, know about that. Next, I'd argue that the concrete operation to the east is not an impediment to development. And I don't see any impediments to development of this site. But I'm not a planner or an engineer, and sharing my own hopes and dreams for this site is certainly jumping ahead of the game. I don't want to jump ahead of the game at this meeting and talk about design ideas or how this all should happen. It would be premature to get into the how tonight. How is this development going to happen at this particular location? That's for another day. But with our strategic goals of expanding residential development and expanding our tax base to help us pay our bills, the city, and pay for wage increases that we know are coming, I'm here tonight to argue that development of this site is an important subject that deserves the preferred attention of city government. What I'm asking tonight is some input from the council. How do council members react to the pinkish-orange on page seven here, which endorses mixed-use, commercial residential development of this area? Is there anyone on the council who thinks this site should not be developed? We have heard from someone who sees this site as a place for a museum or another public building which would do nothing for the tax base. Other survey responses mention this site for more athletic fields. Again, nothing for the tax base. I think the city had a consultant before the corridor study was done that suggested an amphitheater. Again, nothing, I don't think that went over very well, from what I read, that idea. Other survey responses mention this. I realize that the City of Fond du Lac, with its manager form of governance, which I support, relies heavily on staff to move issues of this kind along, and the staff is doing its job. I have no complaints. But this issue, whether this site should be developed at all, or including residential as described here in the corridor plan, calls for leadership from the elected officials of the city, and that's why I'm asking for input from council members tonight. Not a vote, just seeking input. And if council members see that this Scott and Main Street site has development potential, I would ask that the city staff initiate a process, or continue the process that's already going, which would bring this matter back to the city council for more serious consideration in a manner to see what can the city do to maximize this site. We only have one chance to do this right, and just speaking selfishly, I guess, sooner would be better for me than later, because all of us understand the North Main Street corridor pretty well, and before too long, all of us are going to be gone. So before we're gone, it would be terrific if we could have an opportunity, in a sense, to finish what we started, if it's for the benefit of the city, so, thank you.
Thank you. Are there council members who'd like to weigh in? We'll start with Mr. Mullen.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Schussler, for bringing this up. One thing, let's get out of the way. It's my understanding that you cannot do a TIF for residential, is that correct?
So technically, if you do residential, straight residential, you cannot do a TIF, but that's on a greenfield site. You need to recall, as Mr. Schussler pointed out, that we acquired the former Saputo site. That was a blighted site, so under the blight determination, you can do a TIF district, and you can do housing. I'd like you to remember the number of TIF districts within the downtown area, which are all housing, and were all blighted sites. And so, yes, you can do a district to support residential, but not on a greenfield site, that you're limited to 35%. But because we took down a 90,000-plus-square-foot beautiful cheese factory, it's a redevelopment site, and you can TIF it.
Now, on the topic of the site use, as I recall from the North Main corridor plan, the predominant use of that site was residential. It was mixed, potentially, but most of the square footage to be built would be residential. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would probably estimate that about 85% of the proposed use for the site was residential, with potential commercial on a first floor and an upper floor of the larger building.
Okay. And also, in terms of adding to the tax base, residential is very good, isn't it? I mean, in terms of incremental value.
Residential is a nice development.
Yes, okay. The issue, though, is we're not going to develop this. A private entity is going to come in and develop this site, correct?
That's correct. So the city, if we either partner on private property, or if the city owns the site, then we usually use the site as an incentive, give it either for a dollar transfer or a minimal amount, and then the developer develops the site. The city does not.
Right. And of course, that would involve a development agreement that would limit what they could build there, or there would be an understanding of what the project is. You wouldn't just give the project and go build whatever you want.
No. Development agreement under Tax, Income, and Finance District needs to come before the city council for action and approval, and within that development agreement, it would specify what type of development would be on that site.
And of course, anything that we would okay would be consistent with the North Main Street corridor plan. Is that correct?
That would be your choice.
But that's the whole idea of doing the plan, is to actually implement it, right?
Planners like it when we follow the plan, but again, that is...
I mean, why make a plan if you're not going to follow it? Okay?
Again, it's your choice.
Okay. So I would just like to say, I thought the Main Street corridor plan was good. I agree with the use of the old Saputo site as primarily residential. I've always thought that that's a great use for the site. It's next to a 500-acre park. If we were going to, I don't know, do some of the things that were floated, we have 500 acres that we could play with right there. But this particular site is the only place where we can do some kind of residential development. And also, I feel like if we can find a contractor who will take on that site and build something spectacular, that would catalyze the whole rest of the plan. And so, you know, that particular site is a key part of making the rest of the North Main Street plan work. Would you agree with that?
I would agree.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Heisler?
Thank you very much, President Brolle, and thanks for bringing this up, Mr. Schussler. I couldn't more fully support everything that you said related to a couple of key points. For me, it's pretty simple. I think you're 100% right. I think that tonight is more about, do we develop this site, or do we not develop this site? And I just want to weigh in and say, develop this site. Follow this plan. It's a really good plan. We've got one of the best in the business, our Community Development Director. She's, and her entire department, are excellent at what they do, and I have no doubt that they'll hit a home run with this site. I think it's going to be a phenomenal thing for us as a community. I also completely agree that this is, the phrase I would use is a moonshot development. I want, this is a one-shot deal, as Mr. Schussler so eloquently pointed out. I think this is, we have a really, really wonderful opportunity, as Mr. Mullen just said too, to do something spectacular there, and I think that we have the tools and the right team to do that. And I also want to close my comments by saying, I think this is the council to help move that forward. This council cares an awful lot about housing. It cares a lot about making our community better. It's what we try to do each and every time we show up to a meeting, and this council, its only agenda is to move the city forward in the best way possible, and we all know we need housing. So I'm grateful that this came up now. I'm 100% with Mr. Schussler in saying that the sooner we can see stuff, the better. I'm hoping that we can get a consensus among council tonight to say, yes, develop this site, and then, you know, in the early part of 2025, we can get some ideas and thoughts and suggestions from Mr. Moore and Ms. Benson and her team. So with that, I'll close my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who'd like to share some thoughts?
Yeah, I have some comments.
Yep, Ms. Laring.
Okay. I do agree also that we should develop this site. I agree with Mr. Schussler with market rate. I feel that, you know, we could do some other things, multi-use would be good. There have been some really bold ideas that I've heard in the community. There's been someone who said we should extend the marina, and we should put condos out there. There are people who say we should put more of a high-rise type with the more expensive places being on the back overlooking the lake. I mean, there's a lot of ideas out there, and I feel like something on the bottom that supports our park, so maybe a cafe and gift shop that, you know, has something to do with Lakeside Park in Fond du Lac and the lighthouse. But overall, the ideas, I feel like the citizens should really be involved. It would be really nice to have some kind of a, I don't know, a meeting where citizens can come and express their opinions, just because they felt voiceless back when the whole thing happened with the peninsula. And I feel it's important to include people, but at the very least, to get the ideas from the developers, because those developers can come up probably with some really great things that we didn't even think of. And I just think that's really important, to listen to other people instead of us and people in the city just always making decisions about everything.
Thank you, Ms. Laring.
That's pretty much, yep.
All right, thank you. Mr. Godfrey?
I'll be long. I just want to, Tom, thank you for pushing, starting this conversation with this site. I just want to echo what Pat and Angela and Tom just said. We definitely need to push this forward, to see what we can do to move this forward, and echo what Angela just said, also to bring the community in on this as well, to give us a little bit more of a guidance, or to give their voice and opinion to see what they want to see as also. That's all I got to say. Thank you again, Tom, for giving us this topic to bring up, because we definitely do need to think about this housing situation, and that site has been a little vacant for a little while, and it needs something to do out. We need something out there, and what better than houses and housing to deal with our already housing services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Thank you, President Brolle. I'll be brief as well. I don't think I can rubber stamp my tenure on city council without having us doing something on that property, so we are the council to do this. I think we were elected to do a lot of things out there, and we've kept that promise. So I fully support what we have to do. Just tell me what we need to do, and I agree, it's got to be smart. It's got to be market rate residential. I think we have involved the community already a few times, but if we need to do that more, we can. But you have my support, Mr. Schussler.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make the point, this plan was not created in a vacuum. There was a lot of opportunities for, for public input in here, and it was certainly, that was considered when the plan was put together. Also, in terms of what we might want, or the public might want, the developer's going to build what he wants to build. And as long as, as long as it's consistent with the plan, we're not going to micromanage and say, oh, you got to have this kind of shop here, or whatever. So, I mean, public input is nice, but this is going to be a private contractor that builds this, and he's going to build whatever he thinks is economically viable. And all we can do is, well, I mean, we can say no, but we're not going to be able to dictate. You know, we can make suggestions. We can say, well, we'd like this, we'd like that. As part of the development agreement, there's going to be a negotiation. But, but ultimately, whoever steps forward with the money to build this is going to get to call the shots.
Thank you. Are there...
Can I make other comments?
Yep, go ahead, Ms. Laring.
Yeah. So I agree, I agree with what Mr. Mullen just said, that, you know, we can't dictate necessarily what happens there. The developer's going to do what they want to do, but I just want to, I just want to caution everyone. I just feel like, you know, we don't want to make mistakes with this, because I feel like it's an important area of the city. And I just hope that we do listen to some opinions or input from other people. It doesn't mean that's what's going to happen, but I feel it's important that people have a voice on this, because it is such an important area of the city.
Thank you. Ms. Benson, I guess I'd like to ask your thoughts on community involvement, because, you know, this is the first conversation since Mr. Schussler brought this to us to talk about tonight. So could you just maybe talk about what the steps might be going forward?
Sure. So, you know, to Mr. Mullen's point, you know, the redevelopment vision plan for North Main Street was undertaken with quite a bit of public engagement, focus groups, surveys, and public meetings. And so it was not taken, undertaken with a light heart. And so with a lot of forethought into what was needed and what the future of the corridor could be. And while I agree that public input is important, we have to keep in mind, what are we asking them to input on? So, you know, the fact of the matter is, is we have some conceptual designs, but otherwise you're, you need to be able to have something for the public to react to. And so that's always the challenge in private development. It's a little easier on public property and public projects, because that's under our control and we can do everything. We've got the design. When you're working with a private developer, again, to Mr. Mullen's point, it's about the economic feasibility. What does the market show? What are the costs going to be? And so that kind of creates a little bit more of a challenge, you know? And I think the opportunity for, you know, public involvement is a little bit later in the process, once we know kind of what the vision of the developer might be, and to kind of share some input, and then from there, potentially tweak the design a little bit if there's concerns about this and other aspects. But I think if you do it too early on, you've got this grocery bag of things that you don't know what to tell a future developer what we want. And so that's what I would just caution. I, I do believe in public engagement, but when it comes to private development, it gets a little bit trickier, because you don't know what you're asking them to react to at that point.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate hearing that, because I think all of us probably have grand ideas of what we could do with that site, but at the end of the day, you know, I'm not the one who's going to pony up the money to make that happen. None of us really are, if it's a developer that's coming in to work on that. So I think, as Mr. Schussler pointed out, I think just getting kind of a general idea of do we want to move forward and possibly where we want to start, I think we do at least have a, I think, a pretty good consensus here that, that council wants to move forward. And also that we want to see housing, because we also have the data from our housing study that shows that we are in desperate need of housing of all kinds. So, you know, again, while one person might have some idea of what kind of housing could go out there, and I might have a different idea, at the end of the day, it might be what we can best work with a developer to see what would work best in addition to what works with our North Main Street plan. So, you know, we, I think we have a lot of factors that can work into what kind of decisions are being made down the road. Mr. Mullen.
Just, just one quick point on, on public input, and, and it speaks to Ms. Benson's There will be a development agreement when this property is, when we have a developer and they're ready to do it. So we'll have an idea of what they want to build and what we are going to give them. And there will be an opportunity at that stage before we sign on the dotted line for public input. And at that point, you'll have something concrete. You can either like it or not like it. Also, the housing study will hopefully make it a little easier to market this project or this plan, because we need so much housing at all levels. Thank you.
I would just also like to point out, because this is a neighborhood mixed-use district, and you'll recall that you recently adopted an ordinance that creates design standards for the neighborhood mixed-use. So that does require a plan commission review and approval. And so there will be another level of review at the plan commission level as well for design. And so again, there'll be plenty of opportunity a little bit later, rather than earlier, to allow the public to, you know, see what is going to be potentially proposed, and then to get feedback and make adjustments as necessary.
Madam President, would it be, would it be appropriate to just kind of go around and kind of have everyone express their approval or disapproval of, of...
I was going to let Mr. Heisler speak first, but I was thinking, Mr. Heisler also wanted to make that suggestion.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea. Pat, you're for it. Go first.
Yes, well, I would, I would be in favor of directing city staff to move forward, looking for a developer to develop something in accordance with the Nor, North Main Street corridor plan.
Thank you. Mr. God, we'll just go around. Mr. Godfrey.
I would be in favor as well. It is my total support. Thank you, guys. Looking forward to the next steps.
I'll add my support as well. Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Laring?
Yeah.
I like the way Patrick put it, yes.
All right. Mr. Schussler, I just would like to ask, is there anything else you'd, you'd like to add, since you're the one who...
Nothing further, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you again for, for bringing us this item so we could have this discussion. And thank you to council for a great discussion. All right, before we adjourn, I do just want to take a moment to thank our city clerk, Ms. Hefter, and your staff, and all of our wonderful election workers who led us to have a very smooth election while having some amazing turnout here in the city of Fond du Lac. So thank you so mu, I mean, our thanks really aren't enough, but thank you so much. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Godfrey. This is not debatable. Please proceed to vote.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We are adjourned.